Well, sure. You need to get that out of there, please?
And this isn't really, you know, because you have parentheses, but maybe I feel like probably I should be under present, but all the meeting instead of technical.
Oh.
Like, present but via telecommunication.
Right.
That would be standard.
Instead of the.
That would be standard, yep.
Okay, got that, Dan?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add about?
So you want to, you want to list between the.
Yeah, you guys, you gotta list the two names, and then you've got to say, say, we received this from, from so on after discussion, we moved it to safety. I just gotta get in that first paragraph and then another bit.
Right, okay.
Okay, any more discussion? All is good with that?
Right.
Okay, now we're gonna go, we're gonna go super thin or we're gonna go right through the first one?
Let's go right through the first one.
Let's go, let's go Dr. Harding. So we're gonna do a little different, guys. Um, so first, I want a motion to accept the report that she give us already, and I have a motion to accept the report that she already gave us.
Oh, he knows he did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now we're gonna discuss it. First of all, if I was Dr. Harding, I watched it today, and I thought it was a really good, really, um, I actually watched it twice, understand. So, anybody got any questions for her? And you have anything you want to add?
I would, I'm sure we did a really good job with the board this week.
Yeah, I love working with plenty of the monetary and things like that, and stuff that she's always doing.
No, thank you, I'll wait for them. Well, it's exciting work, I mean, that's what you want to.
It's almost like, yeah, they know, they know, they got the numbers for the, uh, fundraising.
Yeah, it wasn't that exciting.
I want everybody to know that it was almost thirteen thousand dollars now, what, you know, how it's on your.
Very, a record, a record high.
I think, I might kind of see him, listen to him like this. I mean, I, I know this is the case, but it kind of like reinforces like, you know, there's, it's a, it's a busy time, those buildings.
Okay, anything else you want to add, everybody, the speaker?
Yes, we do. Um, Ms. Dean is here.
We're having an interview.
Ms. Dean?
She is.
Is she here? Okay.
She'll be back. She had to go interconnect them a lot and.
Yep, no, no problem, completely understandable.
If she comes back, we're ready.
Yeah.
Table. What will you do there?
The table, the table. The table is second your reporting through here from the team. And Mr. Haas, you are up there.
Thank you. Any questions on my report?
First, I have to have our motion to accept the report. Second?
Second.
Okay, um, now, now, go ahead and chat.
Um, the only thing that I have to add to my report is I was gonna have, um, Mr. Deck was gonna come and speak on behalf of both the A Department and FFA. Um, but since the board reported he had something come up, Ms. Free also had something come up, they are gonna come at a later date to talk about our A program and FFA. But, um, anybody that's been following the FFA, taking second place for Farm Business Management at the National FFA Convention is unbelievable to have two kids in the top ten. Is, yeah, yep, and then, um, we also had Emma Kalinsky there participating, her, her job interview skills, and she was just outside of the gold. Um, and when talking with Ms. Free, to have kids in that category, typically North Dakota does not do very well, so even to get a silver was huge, but for her to be that close to gold, so, um, a big shout out to the FFA program and the A, but they will be in at a different date to talk about their program, so I don't have anyone for tonight.
Any other questions for Mr. Haas? If not, I would accept the motion in all his favor of his report with the ask.
Alright.
Okay, now, I will go to, um, Mr. Um, Paul over there, and again, I would, uh, he has, he gives a written report, so I would, um, encourage your motion, I would, uh, entertain the motion to accept his written report. Mm-hmm. Say a second?
Second.
Okay, and then now we're gonna let Mr. Paul talk about his, his report.
Um, yeah, I guess, uh, the one thing, you know, that's a little bit, I included music in their winter concert, it's moved to January twenty-seventh. Uh, the one at Play finished, uh, we had it Thursday the seventh, um, they, they were very young, but some of those kids that were in there, I, I was shocked, yeah. Some of the ones I did not expect it, and so, that looks, looks promising because they were seven graders, and they stood up in front of, you know, they walk in the hallway and they try to curl in lockers, and then they stood in front of all the, their peers to, to present it to the class, and it was, you know, they did a good job for their first time, so that's, that's encouraging.
I think it's good that you didn't think that break that out, and like, exactly, like, kind of break that out, and you couldn't, thank you, that's.
We had, uh, one girl that, um, said, so you'll be in speech this year, you did such a good job, and she said, you think I did? And she's hadn't been in speech, but I think she'd be in trying, so. Um, we're gonna be back to the same dilemma, I'm afraid, next year of needing a, um, one at Play coach. Um, so, uh, that coach we had is moving out of the area, so we'll be, we'll be looking again. Um. Vanessa just doesn't, puts her hand down every time I ask. Um, let's see, uh, football's over, volleyball, we finished Monday. Uh, fifth sixth basketball is going on right now, really small. Uh, not any decent numbers there, they're, okay. Junior high girls will be starting next Monday, and the varsity girls will be starting next Monday. Really don't know as of yet, the junior high girls' numbers. Uh, Harvey has been involved as good as higher than what we expected. Um, varsity, we don't know for sure, that's a mixed things if some of the girls are going out or not. We have the CNDC here. Uh, first part, December fifth, I believe it is, so we'll have that to report next month, we'll measure. On the, uh, transportation, a new activity bus arrived, uh, we haven't used it, and, uh, I talked with, uh, Jerry's and, uh, that mortar will probably be in this week. It went all better than they thought, it was in really bad shape for me. Yeah, they're all, they, I mean, yeah, it was like, yeah, no way it was worn anywhere. Um, and so then I'm hoping to get scheduled and get that down to Harlow's to, uh, get certified for a fourteen passenger, so we should have that by the first of the year. That would be a great addition to have three fourteen passenger buses, so.
Okay, anything else for Paul? Any questions?
I just want to say, if you had contrasted when they performed in the garden, you should have seen them run the table with ninety, hey, about. I'm much better.
Yeah, I, I did, um, so, Corbin, she said, yeah, it was.
It's, it's so fun to watch, and they are young, we'll get business.
Okay, wonderful here.
Be able to accomplish.
Yeah, it's wonderful here, so we have a lot more, very, we have a lot of wonderful offerings in our school, we get some, get that, okay? And, you know, and then Vanessa over there bragging about her son, some kid, but her son is placing about ten million, outstanding too. Okay, so, um, all the favor of my support with that?
Sure.
Opposed? Okay, um, I'm gonna make a president decision, I think I've at least had a guest sitting here long enough, I think we'll let him come speak. He waited, you sat here an hour through our meeting, you thought I was making fun of you, and I wasn't.
Oh, that's fine.
Well, we're gonna let you come on up here.
It's up to you.
Talk about what you're gonna, what you, what you want to talk about.
We can do that. And you think you got just a few of them out here, and you see. I don't have enough for everyone, so it's gonna be made up the share, I apologize. But I wanna make this quick and not take up the rest of your night, so we'll try to go fast. And I'll just work up from the phone. Alright. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Lukens, I appreciate your time tonight. Um, Dr. Lukens and I have talked quite a few times at the NDCL conference, uh, the School Board Convention, and, um, we, we sponsor a booth at all of those, and, uh, what we, I guess, really do is help schools. Um, as you, um, on the first slide there, about us, we are, our main focus is K-12 school facility. We, our goal is to, um, work on everything, I say, from the roof to the foundation, everything in between, whether it be flooring, whether it be, um, walls, lights, you name it, so, um, with our main focus is always energy efficiency. Uh, we, there's three of us that started the company, and we got tired of working for bigger corporations or smaller ones that sold off, um, Honeywell, Johnson Controls, Trane. And we've been doing the same thing for probably, myself, I've been around twenty years working with schools in North Dakota, and, um, we just wanted to better serve our customers, and, and provide that more personal touch, I guess, um, not just have our customers be a number, we're a number as a number for you. Um, some of our customers we work with there, um, you'll see on there, it's Pheasant, is one of our biggest customers right now. Um, we take care of all the maintenance of their facility, as far as HVAC equipment, um, we help them with, um, you name it, boilers, lights, uh, I've worked on their floor before, on that Toronto floor, uh, with a previous company, and you got that all cleaned up and, and, and actually shiny again. Uh, so, uh, but we work with Granora Schools, um, I just got word that Weinmer tonight approved, uh, more projects with us, so we're all over the state with the focus on key folks, you know, we, we don't want a Dixon, we don't want a Minot, we don't want a Fargo, we like the rural community. And, and, and the reason being is a lot of times there's, it's hard to find people that will come here and work on the kind of equipment you have, whether it be coal boilers or, um, you know, propane, fuel oil. Um, sometimes just your services are limited, and if you do get someone, it's like, how fast can they get here? So we've kind of built that rapport with contractors in, in getting people that can come out on a timely basis and get free stuff. Um, some of our differences, uh, we just, what, like I said, we want to build that long-term relationship, um, we want to make sure that, you know, we're working together as a team, uh, we don't want to be just a, a, you know, small project, you just want one air conditioner for our classroom, we're not your that. You, if you want to look at the school facilities as a whole and do some planning and, and plan projects for the next ten, fifteen years, that's where we could do a good job for it. Um, but, yeah, if, if you just want something quick, uh, something simple, something small, we'll guide you, we'll help you, but, um, where we can actually do some really good is to plan for the future and, and work on maybe a project here or a project there, and build on that over time. I'm trying to hurry through this, uh, because I want to make sure we save some time for questions here. Um, we offer different types of projects and solutions, um, one of the most common things that we do is what we call performance contracting, or guaranteed savings projects. And that's where it's, um, actually written into the Century Code, um, because if you have a building or facility project over two hundred thousand, you need to hire architects and engineers. Um, if you go with this method, which is laid out in Century Code, um, we, you don't have to follow that same, um, line in the Century Code, but then we take all the responsibility, um, we even take the responsibility of the energy and operational cost. So we have to promise that the project will save the, equal to the cost of a project over fifteen years, and if not, we have to pay the difference or make things right. Um, we, you know, make their cost work in your favor. Um, we don't want to pay that back, so we're gonna make sure that we do our own work, we're gonna make sure that, that our, you know, we, we want to be a little conservative, and hopefully have more savings when you actually are in the written guarantee. Um, the nice thing about this type of project is it allows you to have more say in who the contractors are. Um, you know, a lot of times when you do a bid spec project, maybe it's for, we'll just use a boiler replacement, you send it all for bid, you advertise, you could get contractors out of Minneapolis, you could get contractors out of Billings, I've seen it happen, um, I think a contractor from, uh, on a Granora project was, um, out of Missoula or something. Getting them back for warranty work is, is almost impossible. So in this case, of this type of procurement method, you get to use your preferred contractors, we as a team get to pick those. I always try to use local first, my thought is, let's keep that money in your district. You know, there's no sense, if there's an electrician that can change lights out for us, if we do a lighting project, let's use that in our favor, right? Um, there's no sense sending the work out of district or out of the area, sometimes a district can be difficult in small communities. Um, so, with that, oh, also with performance contracting, we have to guarantee a maximum price, so there are no change orders for the contracted scope of work. We, we lay out what the scope of work is, if there's things that come up, um, in the key study that I handed out for you, um, there was asbestos that no one found. Well, that's on us, not on the customer, so, or not on the school district, we had to have that debated, uh, to make that project work, and no charge to the, to the school, so. Um, some of the first steps, if, if we're to do something like this and to work with you guys, um, we would just do like a, a release of information, where, um, it just asks some information, kind of some of the goals, uh, get into some of the information about your facility, um, and then we do a, a thorough investigation, uh, look at the facilities as a whole, find out some of your pain points, is it HVAC, roofing, lighting, doors, windows, flooring, you name it. Um, and then we work with you to build a long-term facility plan. Now, the nice thing is, we don't charge for those as assessment or the facility plan, we do that at our risk, at our cost. Um, the goal is, we expect to provide enough information that you like, and if we did our job right, you are going to use this for a project. If we didn't do our job, that's on us, not on you, so we are not charging for any facility assessments or facility plan. Um, just some things that, um, Dr. Lukens has mentioned about, that could be specific to your district, um, is the energy conservation grant. Um, I think you had talked about, uh, applying for that in conjunction with some Otter Tail representatives and giving you some information. We can, we can enhance that, is my goal, um, maybe, you know, I looked around here, um, for one thing, before the meeting, you opened the windows. That tells me that we're too hot in here, and you have pneumatic thermostats on the wall, so I'm guessing that ninety percent of those, and I guarantee you it's probably ninety or more, are out of calibration. So maybe it's just, we have to send the tech around to calibrate thermostats, which could be a three, four day job, and maybe we can get you, instead of, uh, forty thousand in your energy grant, we can up that to sixty thousand, you know, that, looking at the savings, you have to have that in your payback or less. But our experience with schools, especially this vintage, um, you know, this type of rural school is our specialty, so I think we can really enhance what you're doing, and hopefully get you more in that energy grant dollars. Um, you know, maybe it's lights, we have a lighting specialist to look at every light fixture, and maybe say, okay, well, I see you only have two bulbs in these, but maybe it's a four bulb fixture, just removing two light bulbs might make the difference, you still get the light quality, you're not, no longer overlit, but now you have the right amount of light. And that's a big thing that we look at, too. Common sense solutions, not just throwing a new fixture in because we're changing technology or something like that, maybe it's just something simple. Um, handicap accessibility, wheelchair lifts, um, we've had a lot of requests for that lately, um, actually, one of your neighbors down the road is, is wants the same thing, um, and we have another one that we're working on, so we, we definitely, I've got a partner that is, uh, willing to help us with that, so we love to look at a turnkey installation. Um, I just need to look at some of the project specifics, you know, whether it be what, what the height is, how far you want to travel, um, some of the space constraints. Um, and just to give you a rough idea, Dr. Lukens mentioned, you know, just kind of a product cost and meet time. It's kind of a, a shock, but I put in there about fifty to seventy, but that, there's a lot of variables in that. Um, without seeing, I can't give you an exact quote, but, but a vertical platform lift right now, in self with the electrical, um, and then maybe building a, a ramp of some sort or, um, um, I call it a shelf or over the stairs, just to get to that vertical platform lift, by the time you get all of that done, you're probably in that fifty thousand dollar range to be, to be real. Um, and then I checked on the lead time, and they're about three, anywhere from three to six weeks right now, so, um, you know, we could be looking at, we believe three months by the time we're said and done, just to be, I, I always like to, you know, say worst case scenario and hope for the best. Um, so that's kind of one thing that we're looking at. Interair quality, um, the key study that I, I'm gonna refer to again, um, I believe you probably have very similar setup with this, just looking at, you know, the radiant wall, uh, radiators along the wall, I should say, um, you've got one, two returns there, so you're bringing air up through probably the tunnel system most likely, without looking at blueprints, and it's using that, uh, radiation as a reheat, and then trying to get out, well, that tunnel, we always want to look at those, make sure we don't have moisture problems, make sure the air quality is good, make sure we're getting enough air change through here, you know, that's a big problem, too. Um, fresh air is the best air cleaner, um, so, you know, it's one thing that we always check, um, make sure things are right, we check that by a couple of measures, CO2, looking at the operation, um, just doing some sporadic tests, but, um, and then actually even asking about illnesses, you know, historically, what are the, you're getting a lot of illnesses throughout the building, is it going up, is it going down? You know, just, just through some questions, we can get an idea of air quality, just from our experience. Um, and, and, and these things all intertwine, so, interair quality, energy efficiency, preventive maintenance, it all works together to have the best building that you can. Um, let's skip ahead on my page, I did put in there just rough expected lifetime, life cycle of equipment, just to give you an idea of another reason why this is all important for your long-term facility planning, is you could have, I, I, without seeing anything, I don't, I haven't looked at your boilers, I haven't looked at, um, any of your equipment, but I'm guessing, I mean, boilers are probably, if they're, if they're over twenty years old, probably need some really heavy maintenance on that. Um, and I don't, I'm saying this blind, so, um, but just, just guessing, so, I, and that, that's not to say that your maintenance staff isn't doing their job, but it takes a lot of time over the day, you've got to keep them up, it's, it's a tough job, plus you've got to manage all the maintenance in the building, and that's not easy either, so, um, I give those guys a lot of credit. And, well, like I mentioned before with Pheasant, we are doing what we call our continuous commissioning. Um, we're taking some of that pressure off the maintenance team to change, you know, change the filters, do some of the more in-depth maintenance on the HVAC equipment, the boilers, um, and then what we do is we build a repair allowance into that, and that works well for their budgeting, so we say, okay, maybe, um, maybe for that, I don't remember what it is offhand, I think it might be ten thousand a year, and we take that ten thousand, anything comes up where their maintenance staff can't handle it, they give us a call, we get someone out right away, um, recently, there, a good example of this is their boilers have leaking tubes, we found that during the maintenance inspection. We got the tubes replaced, they're back up and running, um, and if we just take that out of that repair allowance, they don't use that all at the end of the year, we just credit it back, they go over it, they pay us the difference. So it's fair for both, um, and it's not one-sided either way, it just works, uh, but it's a way to pre-budget some of those items that maybe you're not expecting to begin with, but you've got an idea. So, and that's something we've worked on to build, so it's not anything that happens overnight, but it's, uh, it's, it's worked well for a lot of our customers, and, um, we do, we've been doing a good job, so. Um, just to count one more, I guess, on my order, but, um, I guess with that, um, Dr. Lukens, is there anything else that I, we've talked about that I haven't mentioned in the, or during tonight?
No, no, I think, you know, there was a directive from the building committee to work on, well, at a past meeting, we talked about doing an energy assessment or working on audit, so, this is a step forward in that, because this is actually someone who's gonna be able to go outside of just electrical in their assessment. Um, so you're gonna look at coal efficiencies, you're gonna look at, you know, all those divisions, not just electrical, we're still having audit area work up there, electrical assessment. Um, the wheelchair lift, which we've already done a conference a few times on that, so we could, you could kill that bird with this stone here. Um, and then the air quality test, which was a directive from the building committee to start going forward, and so I, when I was talking to him, I was like, we could get three things taken care of with one motion, and it gets you guys to move on the progress that came on the buildings as we work to get things together.
Absolutely, and, yeah, and like I said before, we do this at, at our risk, um, we want to make sure we're providing enough detailed information for you that you're gonna like, and hopefully we build your trust during this process, and you decide to go with it. Um, again, if we don't earn your trust during this, it's on our, us, it's not on you, so that's why we don't charge for it upfront. Um, you know, we, we'll also show you, as we go through things, open book pricing, you're gonna know exactly what our contractor costs are, you're gonna know what we make on the project to the penny. So there's nothing hidden, it's all open, and it works well for a lot of boards, because you guys have to be responsible for the public's interest, right? Um, knowing that, then you get to see where everything goes. Now, a lot of questions I get are, so you just take this and, and take the contractors and, and bid and, and mark it up and sell it back to us? Not really, I, we do all the project management, we hold them to a higher standard. Um, it is not just a bid spec where, okay, Joe's plumbing, here you go, go put this in, you know, we, we run it through its tests, we make sure that, you know, there's no warranty issues before they become warranty issues. So we're doing predictive testing, um, making sure that everything works right, uh, you have a dedicated project manager, and I say to handle everything. When our contractors come on site, they should go to your staff only to get access or say, how's your day going? Um, it should never be, we've got this issue with that, or that issue with this, you know, Dr. Lukens is here to work with the building, educate, not make sure that the construction project is running well, that's where we come into it, and, um, but, yeah, really, it's more, we manage everything from the top down with no change orders, guaranteed maximum pricing, and you don't have to deal with those interests. Um, but it's fully transparent along the way, and I guess all I'm asking for tonight is just permission for Dr. Lukens to sign our release of information and get us started, and then we can see what, how this transpires, so there's no commitment to the board other than just permission, um, for us to start looking at the building, really. Um, we don't give any dollar commitment, no contract, anything like that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so looking at the building, and I think the motion should consist of the three things we're working with.
Sure.
Right in there, the energy assessment, the wheelchair lift, and the air quality test, and it's something. And it's something else we're to come up, because you do have, you've already done something similar with this with Honeywell. I work with Honeywell right now all the time with boiler in this building. And so he'll be, you know, if he finds something in his energy assessment that maybe we want to change on the boiler or look at long-term, because that contract comes to, I believe, here in the next couple of years.
So I'm going to ask, that Honeywell contract, is that back from the ESG Honeywell performance contract back from a long time ago?
Two thousand nine.
Is that where they just give you the report annually?
Yeah, it's a grant, it was a grant that we took back in two thousand nine.
Okay.
So, but.
But there's some things in there, like, we can basically, if, if that's not actually giving you the savings that it, they promised, you know, because we're, we're down, far enough down the road, you know, you aren't obligated to the, the monitoring part of that, I guess, is what I'm getting at. So I can, that's one thing that we can look at, a cost savings for you, if it's not worth having that anymore. Yeah, I've written, I've written that letter to the Department of Congress numerous times, just to make sure, if. Now, you still have to pay back the loan. Now, that is one thing, you know, I can't get you out of it, but. So, I used to work, the company I worked for sold out Honeywell, so I'm a little familiar with that project. But if, and I'm just looking at it from a cost-saving standpoint, but if you're just giving the report to say you're making the energy savings that were promised, is that really doing anything? What, what is that, what does it gain you? But it's something that we can evaluate and say, okay, what's the value? And I can bring it to your building committee, and we can say, is this worth keeping or not? And then we can restructure it. Now, by Century Code, if we do a guaranteed performance contract, we have to do measurement verification. In my contracts, they do it a little different. Instead of having an auto-renew contract like you had then, I do a three-year contract, which is mandated by Century Code, to have monitoring for three years, and then I will personally write you the letter to get out of that at the end of the three years. You're only charged one time, and you're not charged on a renewing annual basis. So it's just a way for it to say that you met the requirements of that, are you making the savings? If you're not, I say keep going. Don't get out of that, that revolving contract, because then you have something to go back on. But it's something that we can analyze for you to see what's the value to the district. If there's none, I'll tell you, if there is some, I'll tell you to keep it, I'm, I'm going to tell you the way it is. So, it's something that, I'm glad you mentioned that, because it's just another thing that we look at to help you. Because we want to be long-term partners, again. We're not here to just get someone picked out or do this or do that. We want to build a partnership. We've done the president, now on the third superintendent I've worked with there, and we want to continue to now. So, and, and keep going in the area, and build our company, so.
I, I would ask for a recommend, I would recommend you make a motion just to hire them based on the directives you brought forward. And we'll, I'll sign the, the understanding that I've got to sign the way for, for release of information, and we'll come back to you with the assessments and, oh, and the wheelchair lift estimates as well as the air quality tests when we have them ready.
It'll take time, it doesn't happen overnight, but it'll take a few months, and some will work on through all the winter, and then we'll present, I'm assuming, to the building committee?
Yeah, it'll come up through the building committee.
Yep.
They may ask that you come and present.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, but we'll.
I don't mind.
Once we get, once we get through that process, we can make that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I, I, I'm more question and answer, I, I'm not a formal president if you try to go.
I know, but the kind of wheelchair lift we have talked about, for a specific situation, is that, like, that collapsed with the wheelchair?
Okay.
Is that something you have?
I can look, I can do some checking. So the one that I'm working on for a neighbor of yours is actually one where you wheel the chair into, and then it's more like an elevator style, where it goes straight up and down. They do have one where you can wheel on, and then it, it rides down the stairs at an angle. That doesn't sound like what you're talking about either, so. Yeah, and, and that's something that we'll have to evaluate and look at the room. You know, maybe, maybe neither of the ones that I'm thinking of will work, and I'll reach out to my supplier and see what they have, so. I'm always looking for new, exciting technologies too. And I have a meeting tomorrow on solar parking lots and streetlights, so actually get those off the grid. They promise that in our climate and in our area, we think we get light three hundred sixty-five a year, so. So I'm not looking at, and they're fairly expensive, so.
Any other questions for the other board members? Any other board members got a question? Where else have I questioned?
I know. You're talking about buildings, right?
Yeah, I, I would assume, I guess, yes, we're good.
We, okay, I just would ask for a motion, and, yeah, I'd move that.
Make sure you, any motion?
To move forward with an assessment, an energy assessment, a wheelchair lift assessment, a cost estimate, an air quality test for both of our buildings. But signing their.
No, not hiring, so, recommendation, right?
Right, but we're not hiring.
No.
It's just a release, yeah, there's a release of information.
Well, we're going to gather information, let's, let's move that.
I, I think that we approve a release of information for Core Solutions to provide an assessment for both of our buildings, including energy assessment, the wheelchair lift, cost estimate, and air quality test.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Okay, and I'm not going to beat them, you did a nice job, and we all understand. I think we all understand what we're into, right? Anybody have any questions at all, on what we're doing? Discussion, 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 all in favor of, of not hiring, of releasing information to Core Solutions, please do ask.
All right.
Followed, and now to you. Right?
Thank you. And, and I just asked that if there's any other questions, please route those through Dr. Lukens, and he'll get that to me. And then we, we just kind of respect the, the chain of command and making sure that we're all getting the same information. So, I've had it the other way, and I just prefer to kind of vote for one person for that, so. That's all I ask of you, and then I look at this as being a team effort too. So we'll have some questions for you and your team, and I look forward to seeing what we can find.
Thank you. Yep, thank you for coming.
All right, anytime.
I'm going to turn the call back to you.
Ms. Dean. Sorry I'm late.
No, you're not late.
So, very sharp, right?
Right.
Robotics club, we meet twice a week, that's the plan, we've only met once so far. And the kids build robots using Lego bricks, and they program it. And hopefully, they are going to have a successful competition experience on the twentieth of January in Minnow. We have two teams, and that's a qualifying event, and this is a hooky team, two hooky team, actually, so. We may or may not go to state in February.
And this is all in relationship to the maker space and the.
Oh, yes. We were able to do this only because we got the Maker's Grant. I remember last year, I went to pheasantin before applying for the grant, and because, I think you told me, that they have eight robotics clubs. So I took my two kids out to school one day, and we went to check it out, it was their first session, and that teacher was very kind, she let me in, sit through the session. And my boy, my eldest, he thought he was there to take part. I still feel how sad as a parent, you know, your kid is so excited, and he's like sitting there getting ready to take part, and now I'm like, that's what I'm doing, that's what I'm doing. So disappointed, and I'm like, why did we have this? And so I come back, and we don't have any money, because each of those kits cost about five hundred dollars. So even if we just wanted to get one of them, there was no way we could get five hundred dollars. So when I applied for the grant, one of the things I mentioned was that we'd like to have robotics to take part in these competitions. And that is now a reality, so it's really exciting. We have four of those five hundred dollar kits for the tenth class age group. I also purchased four more for the lower grades, so that if there is any interest, if there are teachers or parents who want to run a club for the lower grades to get into robotics, they totally can. This First Lego League is not just for the upper elementary, it is also for the lower grades. So the kits are available, if there are people who want to do it, it's there. It's not like when I wanted to do it, there was nothing, so it's there. And I, I would love to see more teachers and parents get involved in this. And also, I love that we have, we opened it up to seventh and eighth grade as well, because the actual competition is open up to eighth grade. So I was able to conduct, Mr. Haas, and he, you know, spread the word, and so we have two seventh graders as well. Very great.
I know, I think it's cool, I've seen, you know, other schools, and they do it, you know, really, oh my gosh, the things that they create is unreal. And I want to compliment you guys, I bought a comment made on the maker space, like the room. I liked the video, because at least I could see it then or whatever, and I compliment you guys on what you did.
And eventually, you know, this is me, it was me, it was my, I, I have imagination. Yes, of course, okay. So I have this big dream that one day it's going to be no place where both schools, not just the elementary, but both schools can actually bang their stuff. Because I know that they have, I, I spoke with some teachers, and they mentioned, yeah, they've got drones in the aggro, they told me. They've got a 3D printer in the aggro, okay. But I don't know if everyone gets to use it, I, I don't know how it works, but I was thinking the maker space room could be for both schools, you know, because I heard that Animals has some program where the kids in one school drive over to the other school, and they can use the maker space room in the other school, bring in animals, wasn't it? And so I thought, wow, that's quite a bit for drive, they don't even have to drive that far to get the high school kids over to the elementary. And if they want to, you know, do something with what we have over there, that would be great. So, yeah, I'll make something.
Well, that's, that's great.
I, I think I might have missed it, but did you say, is it Vex Robotics or First Robotics?
First.
Awesome.
First is for inspiration and recognition, recognition in science and technology. It's this organization that teamed up with Lego, and together they have this thing called First Lego League. And they have competitions, robotics competitions, that is international. So it starts at the middle regional enrollment.
Yeah, and First Robotics, I have a meaning to ask you that question. I was a captain of my robotics team in high school, and we went to these international competitions. They are, I mean, I, I credit, my personal leadership experience as I was elected captain as a freshman of my robotics team, was at the international for Phoenix, and we had to make a decision on programming, computer programming, because there's, in the games, there's an autonomous start at the beginning. And we were collaborating, collaborating with a group from Arizona on how we were going to be the number one ranked robotics team that was sponsored by Ford, sponsored by Ford. And I had to make a decision on whether my team could handle changing the computer programming, which is the autonomous start. And the coach said to me as a fifteen-year-old, he said, you're the captain, what do you think? And I had to make that decision. So this is more than just building things, this is a lot of skills that go into this. And not only are you starting in the fifth grade, because I did start in the fifth grade, you, you can build that all the way out. The school I went to, we were one of the first teams, I think it was year two when they started at First Robotics, the actual inventor, it was so new at that time that the actual inventor would have the, the game reveal at his place, and then he would pay for everybody to fly to New Hampshire. But the captain that got put in New Hampshire, and they paid for it. And it, it, it's just really a rich experience for kids when you get deep into it.
So now, currently for this session, we were able to pay everything we needed to make the grant, because registration is expensive. It's not just the kits, registering each deal comes to about three hundred dollars. So all that was easy to do, but I did tell the parents at the information session last week, next year we'll have one grade before their season begins, and we'll have to raise the money for the teams to get registered. Not for their kits that that's already bought, to register them. So it is expensive, and, but it is so advanced, because it's not just about robots, it's creativity. And they have core values with this quest Lego League, which is one quarter of the entire school at the competition is how good are you interacting with not just your team members, but other teams as well. So, and then there's another quarter of the whole grade, which is presentation on some innovation project. So it's not just building a little water main and traveling the city.
I was going to say, the kids were super excited yesterday just programming to and getting it to move forward and turn. I wonder if already had it like, you know, getting it on the table and able to make a turn and everything. So it was just exciting to see them excited about just a little bit of programming they were doing. Like they programmed, like they coded before, like we scratch or code.org and things, but that's different when you're actually programming that robot in front of you, that you can touch, not just that screen. And that is very different, like she said, because it's an actual robot. The way when you program things on the screen, they work very smoothly every time the same way. However, the robot, from everything I've read, they will work one way, and the next time you press the same button, it won't work. So consistency doesn't happen easily on that actual robot, the way it does on a two-dimensional game they play, or they create on just the computer. So having to learn that engineering design process, iterate and improve, iterate and improve, that's key. Having that perseverance to keep going and not get discouraged, there's so much to do.
It is a wonderful, it is a wonderful program. With a team that I was part of, they get the initial grant, I think, I don't know if First still has their initial grants out there. They use, they use these three-year grants, and it might be something you can look into, and I would help you with that.
Okay.
We were part of the team that wrote those grants. I don't know if, his name is Neil, Neil the inventor.
They probably do, I, I didn't know that they even have such things. I didn't know they, they even exist, and I can live until the president.
Yes, it's a, it's a very, they have a regional for high school in Grand Forks every year. I believe it's sponsored by my own, own team, so I know, I know that. And it's, it's a wonderful thing.
It is, and I, I would love to see the high school now, currently this project, what I have is going to end in eighth grade. After that, if it's interested, what are you going to do? And I was kind of upset when my, when I was over at the One Act Play last week, one of their pheasantin kids told me, oh, you just have, what did she say? You just have that, the baby stuff, that we actually build robots. Anyway.
I really got her going.
Yes, so, so that would be great, and we could also, you know, expand this, but, those, once again, I think.
And my adopted daughter, you know, she is three, and I told them.
Yes, you did.
She was the robotics team, she was the coach and president for the high school for the first, I think, three years they had it over there. And my son was with it when he was in grade school and high school. And she has agreed on her own time to come and help the team if they need help. She's no longer the coach over there, but she has a connection here in town, and.
Oh, that's wonderful.
She's agreed to come and help them if they need help.
I'd love, if you could give me her email, so I can send her the invitation. Because with First, they're very strict, they have to have everyone who takes part in it to go through a background check. Even we as teachers, although we already have a background check, we have to go through the background check. So I will send her the invite, and she can get all that ready, and then she can, it'd be great, it could be a great job.
I'll be at the front.
Thank you.
Ms. Dean was super efficient and organized and did a great job with all those little tinders and all those little Legos.
Thank you.
It was exciting.
Them kids are usable every year?
Of course, yes, yes, yes. The only thing that is not really usable is this, um, every year, the challenge, the theme of the challenge changes. This year, this year it's called Submerge. So the map, which is an eight feet by two feet approximately, that has all these pictures and materials. So this year, it's a potion thing, and these little Lego, um, mission models will be different each year, because this year it's for the potion. So that is approximately a hundred dollars. That has to be purchased every year. But this big box of Lego pieces that you build a robot with are already paid for. We can use it for your activity. And when I say I, I mean the school, if we make a grant, not me, that's another.
Their first team challenge is to win two hundred.
Yeah.
We have a parent volunteer to make the Lego table.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Any questions?
Let's give them a round of applause. When I would, uh, I would, um, I can't make a motion to accept, but I already, um, no, 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 we had to, I had to, I couldn't, we didn't vote on it, because we had to.
Right.
Yeah, all was in favor, all was in favor, report, we say aye. So, aye. Okay, all right, so the next thing we have on our agenda, and I, I don't, this is not me, by the way, having stuff on board, it's like, it's right as we go here, but, uh, we are now going to talk about super intensive evaluation, okay? And that has to be done, um, on the fifteenth, right, or whatever, but, um, and so, um, I did have, we had an hour and a half conversation on Monday. Dr. Lukens and I have one to do this, and we have talked about some of the things we need to work on, and we talked about some of the things that we need to improve on, so conversations, and, um, we're going to go about that, so. We have a discussion, motions accepted, what will they do here?
I can make a motion to, um, accept a super intensive evaluation along with the discussion.
Okay, and now we second the lap. Okay, now we'll probably give them a second, um, um, discuss the evaluation and, and what we did, and now we're going to have a discussion. We have a discussion, a discussion, okay? So I should get this one to the desk, or? Will we stop with the discussion if you want to?
Yeah.
You could, you could table it and do a lap for us.
Okay, we will table that for a second, and then we'll go to, what, oh, yeah, we haven't done your report, what's for your, your? Yeah, do, now I have to have a motion to accept your report, okay, do you have to motion and post it in that?
You have to move the table.
Okay. All right, so. Okay, probably move that, you table, okay, now go ahead, let's have a motion to accept Dr. Lukens' report. Okay, so. Second?
Okay.
Okay, all right, discussion, go ahead, Dr. Lukens.
Yeah, um, you, you see my report, I sent it out, the video link in it, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I'm gonna break the news, you know?
I'm gonna snap up the planning sheet, I don't know what I did wrong.
It's kind of maybe, I think it's kind of towards the bottom.
Wondering why this Kelly and this Robbie, so. Quite a quick item.
I had a lot of things going on this week, trying to, I just been trying to, trying to move, so who knows, who knows what was happening? Okay, any more, any more questions for, um?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess, um, so, there's a lot of references to the CTE Center, and it says, um, reinforce our vision for rural CTE Center. Considering that the board has never discussed the CTE Center, I would like to know what our vision is.
Oh, I just, was, you sent me to Elm Brook, and so I was talking about the vision of the CTE Center from Elm Brook. You said you moved, there was a motion in a second, and that was in Elm Brook. The idea with Director CTE, CTE Vision, that would be more Wade Six Vision. And rural CTE Centers, the goals of CTE Board, State CTE Board, is to increase participation in rural communities for CTE Centers. And I think that's, I think it's a, I think it's a celebration that we're getting involved in that discussion, and that we're part of that. So that's why that's part of the celebration. You know, the fact that Wade is seeing community, you know, community support across the state for that vision of rural CTE Centers. So, yeah, that's where, I mean, if, if there were something to come to pass where, you know, you go down in the building initiatives, CTE and classroom improvement, you know, we talked about, that, I mean, that was a motion in, especially in the, that, you know, CTE, multi-strand learning, that's part of Elm Brook, Elm Brook is multi-strand learning. So incorporating, I guess, all right, it all has to do with your motion and second and trip to Wisconsin.
Well, that was. And, and the, and the Vex report, you said your continued support to that, that, to the, to the CP in Arizona, or thank you for your continuing, I just, I want to make it very clear that the board has not discussed the CTE Center, so let's please not get ahead on this.
Well, this, um, that was sent out, and if you're, if you're talking about a different report, um, that was an update sent to you, and if you had a question, I'd be more than willing to take it. The, um, but this is a public report that came out here, and I'm trying to answer your questions on it.
Yeah, we have a need to any building.
It's just gathering information and being involved. There's nothing we won't commit, or there's nothing that's been made by our.
And that's, that's like you said, that was your song, like.
Well, I, I, I think, I think everybody on the board here agrees that we, that we won't commit to that, or just, at this point, just exploring. Does everybody understand? Agreed? Do you agree with that?
Well, in moral, I mean, like, I think when it comes to, like, we're heading into the sixty-ninth Legislative Assembly starting in January, it might be something that we ought to do as school districts across the state, state to, maybe lobby to set aside money to put towards those types of things, specifically the rural communities possibly, I don't know. I'm sure that's gonna be discussion there, and.
If it benefits our students, I'll bet. So, okay, and you have a discussion on that, and you have a discussion on, on Dr. Lukens' department. All those in favor, we say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, so since you went to the bathroom, we didn't want to, um, walk back. We talked about considering a community evaluation, and you read through that, and we talked about that.
We had a motion.
There's a motion, second to a plan, this report, and so, discussion.
I know.
You know what we're talking about?
In accordance to this?
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the super intensive evaluation, please say aye.
Aye.
Poshed? Okay, now, uh, now we're really, we are, so, um, and again, it's worthy of, because we sat through an hour and a half, uh, me and Chris, I sat through an hour and a half, you were sort of planning this, yeah, so.
But now we get to all turn around.
Okay, so anyway, um, uh, so we are out, um, Dr. Lukens is re- recommending to get ahead of the game, if you know there'll be an elementary teacher actually, or kindergarten, right? So he is recommending to be open the position, and now, we get ahead of the game, we'll, with people maybe start advertising when people want to graduate winter, okay? So, we entertain a motion on it, to open that position.
We're gonna take a discussion.
A little twenty, twenty-five.
Take a discussion, okay?
Yeah, twenty-five, yeah.
A second? Okay.
For next school year?
Yeah, so, okay, so what's, okay. Twenty-four, twenty-five?